Called order President and Board of Trustees, roll call please.
Trustee Wajowski.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rasich. Mayor Collins.
Here. If we could rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
I have two, but the first one, it'll be my honor to give the oath to two officers who are soon to join the Police Department, Marissa Schultz and Zachary Bayless, so if you'd come forward. Okay, I state your name.
Aye, Zach Bayless.
Aye, Marissa Schultz.
Having been appointed to.
Having been appointed to.
Having been appointed to.
You can do it in unison if you want. The office of police officer.
The office of police officer.
In the village of Plainfield.
In the village of Plainfield.
In Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois.
In Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
In the village of Plainfield.
In the village of Plainfield.
Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois.
Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, chief.
These are your badges, form with honor.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to both of you. Congratulations to both of you.
Pleased to be here, enjoy it.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Have a good joy out there.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Congrats. Thank you, sir.
It turned off, didn't it? I'd also like to thank one of our police commissioners that's in attendance tonight along with the Executive Secretary and also legal, and of course, all the officers from the Police Department. I have one other thing, I'd like to recognize the following individuals. We're trying to work on this 143rd Street, and a lot of times it goes on behind the scenes that people do not realize how hard they work, and some of the things are not acknowledged in the press and/or in our office, but I'd like to recognize Scott Threeworth, Alan Persons, Brian Murphy, also Brian Carlson from Illinois DOT District One, and also Jim Schultz, he's the Director of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the federal government. They're working behind the scenes along with also Diagio, trying to get this 143rd extension, and I just want to recognize them for their hard work that they put in prior to this and will continue to this project. So, again, thank you very much, and that would be all I have.
Trustees' comments?
I'd like to comment on the hazardous home waste to pick up on Saturday. I was impressed, Alan will probably talk about it as well, there were an awful lot of people that decided they had a lot of waste they wanted to get rid of, people worked very hard to get through that. I'm impressed with the number of residents who sat in line for, I was in line for an hour and forty-five minutes right at the end of the day, and I think some of the lines earlier were longer, so people spent a lot of time there, and the person behind me complained, but in general, I think it went very well. The workers, cold out there, they bundled up as much as they could, they did a great job, they kept at it, and I didn't get out of there until, you know, four-thirty, quarter to five, something like that, or four-thirty, I guess it was, but anyway, I was very impressed with what they did. I think it definitely shows there's a need for this in town, I think we, a good thing we're putting this new program the first of May, I think that'll help pay off, but there are two women who were taking survey of, where did you hear about this event? I would suggest we tap into that information, because that may tell us how we can advertise our new program. I still have a concern that it's just not going to be, everybody's going to know what to do, I think we need to make sure they have a way of finding out that they actually access, so, I know we're working on that, but let's maybe keep adding a little bit more. Anyway, very impressive thing, I'm glad to see so many people were, you know, took advantage of it, so, and hopefully we will, it's once a year for Will County, right?
Yeah, that's correct, sometimes it's hit or miss, just a quick recap, we had almost eight hundred vehicles, this was sponsored by Will County, so there was no cost on the village of Plainfield, we did provide the facility, they provided all of the support assistance for it too as well, yeah, it was more, there was a larger turnout than what they had anticipated, and I'm sure they'll come out with a full report, they left with three semis that were full of material to be properly disposed of, and then there were a couple of tankers on site for the waste oil as well, so it was a great service for our residents, and it really helped out. Does it point towards a future permanent facility similar to Naperville? There could be that potential at some point in the future, and aside from some traffic congestion issues, things went very, very well, and the wait time was an hour or a little more than that too as well, but most of the residents were willing to wait that hour to get it properly disposed of, so, got to give a lot of credit to the residents for being patient and doing the right thing in disposing of the waste properly.
I agree.
I don't know, I know Mr. Lamb went, I was there at about five after eight in the morning, and it really wasn't that terrible, people did not complain, I think it moved quite, quite well, it was superly organized, the one thing is, I know that people were disposing of many of the acceptable wastes, the one thing that I really liked about it, I got rid of that Chernobyl basement of mine, I took about twenty giant tubs, and when I was, you know, the men and women that were taking them out of my automobile, I said to them, I get a ten dollar gift certificate for each one of these, don't I, and with that, they thought that was funny, and they said, no, I don't think you do, but anyway, that was just a wonderful event, and it, once a year, is adequate for most people, I had fifteen years worth of paint, varnishes, et cetera, et cetera, in the basement, I got rid of it all, so in case the house catches on fire, at least it won't explode, but thanks for organizing it and helping.
Just like to say congratulations to Officer Schultz and Officer Bayless, and chief, if you could expound a little on how long the training would be and when the officers get to the street, I know they don't start exactly on the street tomorrow for the general public.
That's correct, this week they're, this week they're doing all administrative duties as far as getting outfitted uniforms, filling out paperwork, meeting with human resources, things like that, next Monday they actually start, well, Sunday they'll actually travel down there, but next Monday they start the Police Academy down in Springfield at the Illinois State Police Facility, and from there they'll be there till roughly the end of June, I think it's around, roughly around June twentieth, twenty-first or so is when they graduate from there, then they will, and while they're at the academy, they'll be given tests numerous times a week, physical tests, academic tests, to make sure they understand all the laws and everything that goes into police officer, including the use of firearms, when they successfully complete the academy, then they'll come back to us, and they'll go through a field training program, actually working, we're side by side with our officers, that'll be teaching all the ins and outs of additional law, but most specifically as it pertains to Plainfield here, they'll be doing that throughout the rest of the summer, and we project their time when they will be going solo roughly around September sometime, end of August, beginning of September, if everything goes on schedule, so, towards the end of summer, beginning of fall is when we expect both of them to be solo on the street and helping with our increased personnel.
But if you, I know we all remember our day when we got sworn, and I remember mine, and just remind them it goes entirely too fast.
Yes, absolutely.
And it comes to an end rather quickly, so prepare.
Twenty-plus years on it, I can, I can still remember my first day.
Thank you.
I would, I guess I would just like to make a comment, commend the chief and your staff along with the rest of the village administrators that had a say or had an input in the hiring of the two new officers, I think, you know, obviously there's sometimes a stereotype with patrolmen that, you know, they need to be big, strong males, so it was nice to see some diversity with a female recruit, I think that's very positive, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to talk a little bit about the Big Serve is coming up, even though it feels like winter tonight, it's at the end of April, it's April thirtieth and May first, and what it is, it's a project that's done with, in conjunction with the village and several churches in the area and individuals who just want to help someone else in need, and there's a whole variety of opportunities out there, whether you're the person that needs the project help, an older person at their home, or you want to help and you don't need to be part of a group to do it, you can come by yourself, if you go out to the bigserve.info, there's all kinds of information out there and to sign up and help, so, it's really just a great time, and it's just a wonderful group of people that come together, and especially this gentleman on my right, Trustee Rasich over here, and Mayor Collins, so, anyway, we, we have a good time doing it, so go on and check it out, the bigserve.info.
Are there any other trustee comments? If not, this would be the time for public comments. If there are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the business meeting, we're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
Beca.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Wajowski. Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries, we're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on March twenty-first, bills paid and bills payable reports for April fourth, ordinance number thirty-two fifty-five, increasing the Class K liquor licenses to eighteen for more at Plainfield located at two forty-one oh eight West Lockport Street. So move. Motion's been made and seconded.
Second.
Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries, next item on the agenda is Playa Vista, we're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two fifty-six, approving the amendment to the annexation agreement for the property known as Grand Park Neighborhoods four, five, and six.
I believe we have Jonathan to say something.
Here, if I may just give a brief kind of recap and summary of the project and where we're at, where we're at this evening, as the board will recall, the request of the petitioner tonight is to approve a series of entitlements that would allow for repositioning of the Playa Vista project from what's currently an age-targeted community with a ranch-style, single-family detached home as well as a townhome component, to have that repositioned as more of a conventional subdivision that would be appropriate for all, all types of homeownership, it would involve reducing the total number of dwelling units from four hundred seven to three hundred twenty-one, and converting one hundred eighty units that were currently approved as townhome units to have those replaced with a conventional two-story, single-family model that would supplement the existing ranch home model that's also would be continued to be offered for sale. The case was originally considered by the Plan Commission in January, and February of this year, and the Plan Commission recommends approval, the board first heard the case in early March and advanced to direct the attorney to prepare the ordinances to consider approval of an amendment to the annexation agreement for Grand Park pertaining to these three neighborhoods, as well as an ordinance approving a major change to the plan development, and those two actions would essentially allow for the repositioning, the changes to the land plan approval and introduction of the new conventional, single-family home types and so forth. As part of the process, the petitioner did work with the Swigaland Park District and came to agreement on a charitable donation that's over and above the existing park obligation that was satisfied with the original two thousand four Grand Park Annexation Agreement, the petitioner also worked with Swigo School District three oh eight to affirm and reaffirm that the school district is on board with the proposed project. When the village board last considered the case, it was, it was continued for two weeks to allow some time for the petitioner to coordinate and negotiate with one of the three existing homeowners there within Playa Vista, and that discussion was ongoing, at the last village board meeting, we directed the attorney to prepare the ordinances for consideration this evening, staff can represent that the petitioner made a good faith effort to negotiate with the existing resident of the townhome unit there, that negotiation did not come to fruition in terms of an agreement, but it's staff's belief that the petitioner made a good faith effort and attempted to come to an equitable resolution in that regard, so having said that, staff outlines that the case is before the plank, or excuse me, before the village board this evening to consider an ordinance approving an amendment to the annexation agreement, an ordinance approving a major change to the plan development, and as well the related resubdivision, preliminary and final plat of subdivision, staff believes the findings of fact have been demonstrated to support the major change to the plan development, and staff and the Plan Commission would recommend approval, and in staff's analysis and evaluation, we believe that the petitioner's current plan gives the project the best chance of success, which would be in the benefit of the development, obviously, but also in the interest of the village to see a successful development continue, and we also believe that that would be in the best interest of the three existing homeowners of the property as well, so staff's certainly prepared to address any questions from the board, and as well, the petitioner's representative is here, but at this time, staff would be seeking approval, thank you.
Homeowners Association compulsory, or is it volunteer?
I would defer that to the petitioner, but it's compulsory.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question, I know staff mentioned you guys had been working with the one resident out there that had expressed some concerns about the plan, do you have any plans to continue those talks or negotiations to try to reach some kind of a agreeable settlement or?
Well, I made them a very reasonable offer to settle their case, and I kept the offer open, and they haven't, you know, they made what I thought was a very unreasonable demand, and they haven't moved off their demand, so, it looks like if it's going to go anywhere, they've threatened a lawsuit, so it probably would go to that extent, so.
Mr. Martin, did you meet face-to-face with the disgruntled resident, or was it all negotiated, telephone, emails, legalese?
Before the last meeting, we met with Mr. Murphy, Mr. Prue, and her attorney, and her in the village offices for about an hour, and you had asked me before, what was I going to say to her, and I offered her some money.
Okay, fine.
What I said to her.
You know, I'm, I realize, and I spoke with a couple individuals in regard to this, this particular issue needs closure, you know, it's been going on for too long, and if individuals, individuals choose to take a further action, then they have the perfect right to do it, but in my estimation, I think your particular project's good for the village of Plainfield, it demonstrates growth, it demonstrates that we are an active community attempting to resolve a problem, we have attempted to resolve the problem, and I, like I say, I think we need closure on this particular issue and move forward.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Hartz for the, all we ask is that should be fair, and according to staff, you guys were, so I'm pleased to see the project move ahead for the village.
They were a good client.
But I had in the, you know, or I shouldn't say objections, but concerns have been alleviated, to the best of my knowledge, you know, it was a very reasonable offer you had made, and if that individual chooses not to accept that, they can exercise their legal rights to attempt to get more, but I think as a board, we made the right decision in deferring this on for a couple weeks and letting you make contact with that individual, and you know what, they weren't left in the cold, they had the opportunity, and let's just move forward with this project, and I'm ready to go, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I would like to say thank you for spending the extra time and the effort to try to work things out with the residents, I certainly do appreciate that, you know, I had the concern upfront, and I think the other issue, I think that you addressed or clarified was the homeowners association as well, how will those six units fit into the rest of the association, I think that has been addressed, that they will be part of the overall, so that alleviates my concern on that, and all's, I guess I would ask is, you know, and lawsuits never help anybody, so if you and your client are open, if you could maybe at least consider the conversation or considering to go to talks, but certainly I know we're going to vote on it tonight, so thank you.
Well, just as a lawyer, when someone says they're going to sue, I always say, God bless them.
These are the only ones I win, right?
Do you mind wanting to ask a question of our attorney here, and I support the project, I think what you've done here is very nice, and you've done good work trying to settle this, but as we change this annexation agreement, does this cause any liability on behalf of the village of Plainfield as far as what, what this one particular person can do by us changing it?
Trustee Benucci, we don't have any contractual privy relationship with, you know, the homeowner, you know, that's not something that we negotiated, we negotiate with an annexation agreement, it's a municipal contract, and in fact, it's one of the special municipal contracts that requires an affirmative vote of five of this board to approve, we can deny it for no reason, it's a little different than a zoning case where if you just denied it arbitrarily, the landowner can take it to court and say you were arbitrary and capricious, et cetera, this is a policy, a legislative decision that only you folks can make, the property owner can't force it upon you, in fact, in annexation law, we're the only ones that sometimes can force somebody in, under a very special set of circumstances where somebody's in between, somebody that wants to come in and the village, in this case, you know, your policy decision is really not subject to, in my estimation, based on existing Illinois law, any review by a court, whether it's a trial court, appellate court, et cetera, because you're exercising your legislative authority, and the issues with the homeowner, you don't have any control over.
I think.
We've never made any representations or, and, and again, that's between Mr. Martin's client and the homeowner.
I've thought that, but I wanted to just have that said publicly, and I have supported this project right along, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to support the project, I'm very disappointed there was no agreement, I don't know what reasonable is or how far apart the two sides were, it's probably not germane for our decision tonight, but I am disappointed the resolution wasn't made before this meeting tonight, though.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, we're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two fifty-six, approving the amendment to the annexation agreement for the property known as Grand Park Neighborhoods four, five, and six. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries, we're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two fifty-seven, approving a major change to the plan development of the project known as Playa Vista to permit three hundred twenty-one dwelling units, subject to the two stipulations in the staff report. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke. Trustee Peck. Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries, we're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Playa Vista Unit Two subdivision. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke. Trustee Peck. Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries, we're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the final plat for the Playa Vista Unit Two subdivision. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, are there any comments or questions?
I just have one final comment on this particular issue, you know what, oftentimes you can hear a glint of board guilt over approving this particular project because that resident, the disgruntled resident did not come into, for final closure with the Playa Vista people, you know what, I, in my estimation, I feel the greater good is served with the approval of this particular project, we've worked diligently, we as a board listened to a major concern, and we acted in the fashion that we felt was not only democratic but extremely fair, and as I say, I think the greater good is being served in Plainfield by continuing with positive growth, a thing that we definitely need, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded to approve the final plat for the Playa Vista Unit Two subdivision. Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci. Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck. Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
I'd like to compliment Jonathan for the quick summary and the revised, or the new way of reporting information to us, we knew the issues, he surfaced it there, he said it hadn't been resolved till he got here, so, I like the kind of presentation that you're making, very concise, very informative, so thank you very much for taking the effort to make the change to what we're getting now.
Thank you very much.
Administrators' report?
No report.
Management Services' report?
No report.
Engineers' report?
Report.
Planning Department' report? Building Department' report?
No report.
Public Works' report?
Very briefly, the village has, in this build, or outside of this building for the village hall, there are two compressors that provide the air conditioning and air handling for this building, about this time last year, the board approved, and we had the factory authorized representative, which is actually train, replace, rebuilt unit.
which is actually a train, replace... Rebuilt the unit, a train unit for one of the air compressors, and then completely reworked that part of the system. They also provided a warranty related to that. The existing other compressor unit is almost fifteen years old. It works in tandem with the other unit, and it's due time for replacement. I know the question came up a year ago, what is the value of these units if they do self-destruct in some way and need to be replaced? Replacement value for a brand-new unit is about a hundred thousand dollars apiece. So, you've got two hundred thousand dollars in value if they had to be absolutely, totally replaced. But at this point, for a little over twenty thousand dollars, it can be rebuilt and rebuilt just like new and last another ten to fifteen years. So, with that, we had one unit completely rebuilt and reinstalled and reconditioned. And then we have a proposal to do the same for the other unit. This is the same exact amount of money, the twenty-two thousand five hundred. It is a factory-authorized representative, and the rebuilt unit will come directly from the train factory to the Village of Plainfield if approved tonight. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Timing is a little bit of an issue because it'll probably get warmer than thirty-two degrees outside this summer, and we would like to get this done this spring. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions related to this project, and it is within the budget.
Obviously, supporting it, that's a good investment. But the contract basically stipulates twenty-two five for a basic effort. But there are also a number of things there that, well, this has to be done, extra costs and so on. I don't know what the costs are going to be. The second, what was the extra cost on the first unit? Was there anything beyond the twenty-two five?
We... Not really. We did... They did add some isolation valves so the units could be operated independently, which it didn't have in the past. So, this was a question I had of the contractor is that this time of the year, it's thirty-two today, tomorrow, it'll probably be cold, but next week it could be eighty degrees. And we don't want to be without air conditioning for a couple of months here in the building, and Tracy is agreeing with me here too as well. So, we did, when they rebuilt the other unit, they set it up so they could be operated independently if needed in an emergency. So, that was the only addition, and the contractor did that work at their cost. So, I have to give them credit to looking forward, listening to our requests and taking care of that too as well.
But I just... It looks like it's open-ended to a certain extent, but those are things which are uncommon, I gather. So, that's good. Very good. Thank you.
Alan, I was just curious as to what changed from last year. I know when last year's came, I think we asked the question, if there's two of them, why didn't we just do both at the same time instead of calling the guy back? Because I know if I call a service guy out twice, it's going to be a little bit more than if he came out once, that's all.
Sure. And their responses, they would, if they even bid it, they would bid it as phasing it in two different sections to get the unit operational so that if we do run into warmer weather, at least we have one unit that's operating, and then to send the other one out and rebuild it. Because this isn't in like a residential project, you could probably get everything done in one to two days. This will take them about a month, month and a half to complete the process. So, even if it was bid as the entire package as a whole, that they still would have phased it in two different operations. So, you've got two different mobilizations costs, and they had told us that the cost, total cost, would be the same.
Didn't really cost us any different by waiting another six or eight months. Thank you.
Make a difference. We didn't do it now, though. We need to do it now to get it done in time, so...
Any other comments or questions? Not... We're seeking board consideration of a motion to award a maintenance agreement for the renewal service work on the second train RTAA chiller screw compressor at the village hall to train building services in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars and authorize the village president to sign the agreement.
So, move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck? Trustee Rassidge? Thank you. That motion carries.
The only other last thing that I have is related to Mayor's comment earlier. Thank you, Mayor, for your comment, the board's support. We will be submitting a federal grant application by the end of this month related to the new transportation bill. And we did get a call from IDOT on Friday that they will be providing the village a letter of support for our project. So, we're very pleased with that. That'll come from the Secretary in Springfield, and we think it's a big hurdle, and we're looking forward to submitting our application on behalf of the village. We'll keep the board and public apprised as to the progress. So, thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
Police Chief's report?
I have no report. Thank you.
Attorney's report?
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Reminders?
April fifth, we are planning commission meeting. April eleventh will be our next committee of the hall. April thirteenth will be coffee with the mayor. April fourteenth will be Historic Preservation Commission. And April eighteenth will be our next regular board meeting.
We're seeking a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
Are you false?